Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Jamie Percy.
Bob Jarvis.
Brian Harris.
Mike Gardner. Approval of agenda, public comment, approval of minutes of October 13th, 2022. Warrants, we have accounts payable and payroll. I don't think we have any correspondence tonight.
Or any excess.
Or any excess weight permits, so we can take care of those.
Excuse me.
Ordinance discussion, enforcement discussion and flyer review. Mobile home park information pamphlet. The animal control review is going to be scratched as well. In place of number 11, we're going to put the executive for personnel. The town and panel office appearance policy review. ARPA parameters and guidelines for applicants. Executive for contractual, public comment and adjourn.
So moved with the changes.
Any discussion? All those in favor. Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Any public comment, hand anyone in? Approval of minutes, October 13th, 2022, select board meeting, which was a regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, discussion? All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Warrants, accounts payable 102122 for $34,422.20.
So moved.
Second.
I just have a question. The credit card payment processing for 171752 and that. Is that a credit card payment or is that what we pay to process for people to pay their taxes and stuff?
That was a credit card payment.
A credit card payment, okay, because it had processing under it. I wasn't sure and I was gonna say, well, if that's the cost, maybe we should look into something else. Okay, thank you.
Great question. I have a motion and I have a second for 102122. All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Accounts payable 102822 for $30,704.80.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections, questions? All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Payroll 10212022 in the amount of $11,199.4.
So moved.
Any questions, corrections? Discussion, all those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Payroll 10282022 in the amount of $10,880.60.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, corrections, discussion? All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Warrants are done. Ordinance discussion, enforcement discussion and flyer review.
So the enforcement piece you brought back from the last meeting, because we wanted everybody to think about it.
Right.
The flyer and the brochure, I think Hannah's trying to share on the screen.
I think you guys did an awesome job on that.
But Hannah, that's all Hannah's.
Did a great job Hannah.
Fairly enough, for a couple of minutes Hannah's trying to share this flyer for, for the, and this is, this is the trash ordinance enforcement.
Right there, yeah.
Right here, right?
That's mobile home parks.
This is mobile, yeah. This is the ordinance enforcement that we're talking about is for the trash ordinance that we had just adopted. If I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, my understanding is it's the, it's the flyer to kind of clarify in a, in a bulleted list. And I have to mirror everybody else's statements, that was really.
Yes, right, and then, and then the other thing is we need to discuss how we're, how and who is going to enforce the ordinance. And that's what I asked you guys to think about and bring back tonight and come up with a, with a plan. If we can. So let's talk about the enforcement part while Hannah's trying to share the flyer. Did anybody come up with an idea, any ideas on the enforcement, who should do it, what we should do? Excuse me, that kind of stuff?
Well, at first I'd like to try to get all the information out there to people as much as possible. I was thinking that for both of these flyers, if we could put it in the town report. And like put it where we normally put up our, like the village market and Winchester's and.
There you go, perfect.
Couple of other places that we hang stuff in and get it into, I don't think we should go into the parks or into people's homes or anything like that. Did anybody check to see how much it would cost for postage to send? No, not yet, no. I think that's something that maybe we should look into to see what it would cost to send out.
Like a mass.
Mass.
Mailing.
One of these. To the whole town. And then first we'd have to decide how somebody could turn somebody in, I guess, an offender. I would think that we would want them to send a letter or something to the board, correct? Or.
That's why we're here.
Right.
We're discussing the whole.
Well.
Right.
Yeah, I think you're on the right track as far as sending the board something unless it's a gross thing that's right there. To contact the sheriff's department, because most likely the sheriff's department is the ones that are gonna give them the ticket. Have any ordinance the town has.
Well, that's.
Or any law enforcement agency that we deem.
Right.
So.
So that's where we're at, who's gonna, who's gonna do the enforcement? Of this ordinance.
Generally, the select board doesn't do the enforcement.
Right.
We assist in the ruling and then move on from there.
So our enforcement officers are usually the health officer.
The zoning administrator.
The zoning administrator, the animal control and the sheriff.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
That would be the four.
Depending on which category it falls in, I guess.
I'm sorry, she does have a preg. There's 1,200 houses in panel and 60 cents per sample is $720.
That would be per flyer, just per one flyer.
For one flyer, yeah.
Plus the cost of printing.
Isn't that printing and delivery?
You said just postage, just.
Postage.
Yeah.
Get any information on cost per sheet printing?
Our podica, I asked her for that many sheets, she said it wouldn't make our, that wasn't for this ordinance, so that was for Rebecca's.
Yeah.
She said for Rebecca's, the $250 wouldn't make a difference, it is a flat rate that they charge us every month.
Okay.
And then the sheets were like, it was $115 and that was like the cheapest price.
For the magnet?
Yes.
We are, just to let you know from, from home, we are displaying the, the ordinance flyer. You might want to go H2 maybe?
Yep.
Um, so we need, we need to, we need to decide what, what the proper procedure is gonna be on enforcing this ordinance. So do we have? So was the first step, is the first step directly to the sheriff, to a, to a law enforcement agency? Or do we have a steps in between? And I think we should have steps in between.
I agree with that.
That's why like.
You know, I think we have someone, whether it's the zoning administrator or the, or the health officer or whoever.
Check it out first to be sure it's legit. I mean, we don't want to have somebody contact the sheriff for like two bags of garbage or something.
Exactly, because then we're paying for that.
Exactly.
Even if it's, even if it's in our normal contracted hours, we're losing.
Contracted hours.
Controlled hours.
Controlled hours, that's right.
That's right, exactly.
Sheriff's department needs to be notified of our new ordinance. Therefore, if they happen to see it while they're in their regular hours, they can take and act upon it. Once we deem it, the date of action.
Because we're gonna. Yeah, but do we, do we want the sheriff's department driving around town looking for trash?
No.
No.
I'm saying if there's a.
I, I even.
An action in their sight while they're.
Driving down the road, do we really want them to knock on somebody's door and say, hey, you got a lot of trash here, clean it up?
No, I'm talking about if it comes off a truck, basically. In that sense.
Well, this is, this is different, this isn't the cover ordinance, this is the ordinance for trash in your yard.
I understand, but still, it's just as far as baggage, I mean.
If they see something coming off somebody's truck, we already have that cover ordinance and yeah, they better be doing something about it because we're paying them. This is totally different, this is that trash in your yard type of stuff that we're dealing with.
So, do you think it would be feasible to, I don't want to put any more work on you and Hannah. But would it be feasible if somebody has a complaint or an issue is to contact this office first? And then Tara or Hannah could say, okay, the health officer can do this one. Or the animal control could do this one, like if it had to do with feces or whatever.
I think that's a really good idea, that's what, that's actually where I was thinking. We get a complaint, somebody's gotta check it out, it could be one of a handful of people.
Right.
And, and then we can decide whether or not we as a board want to take action on it and.
Correct, that way like the health officer could go out or you could go out as the, and check it out and say, yes, there is a problem. And then maybe hand them this pamphlet and say you have.
Well, I think the first step, that's right, I think the first step is to give them some sort of an opportunity to clean it up.
To clean it up.
You know, and then.
Sorry, the, the first step, but just to be sure we're, we're following the steps, somebody reports something.
Right.
Step is we check it out and make some kind of subjective determination as to whether or not it's a valid complaint.
Correct, and then if it is a valid complaint, then we give them the chance of giving them the information and everything. And to like say you have a week or two weeks to take care of it. And then if they don't, then we could go from there.
Yeah, and it should be some kind of form letter, so everybody gets the same one.
Exactly.
That offers resources and.
Right, yes. I agree with that.
I mean, it's possibly that one of us will take and be doing that if these guys aren't available.
Right.
So, I mean, and report back to the board.
Right, so I think, I, I think we can, I think we can start out with your idea that the health officer or animal control officer, if it involves animal waste, so to speak.
Yep.
You know, no matter, you know, type of things and then, you know, then we can, we can certainly move into a select board member or the zoning administrator or whatever we want to do, if we think it might even be a zoning issue. You know, that's, and I think we can probably, you guys can probably make that discretionary call to who should go investigate the first complaint.
Right.
Or, or you know, the complaint on the first, on the first go around with it.
Do you feel comfortable with that?
I do, yes, and then I think if it escalates, say it comes back to the board, yes, it's one that we think you should follow up on and escalates to fines and that sort of thing, I think we should do the municipal ticket.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So how, how much time are we thinking to give from when we send a letter? How much time are we thinking for cleanup, to rectify it before we escalate to a ticket? Two weeks, 30 days?
I.
I think it would depend on the circumstances.
Well.
Yeah, but we should have.
I know, create a criteria.
I think we, I think we should have, I, I think, I think we should, because, because some of this stuff may be difficult for somebody to clean up in a two-week period. But if they had 30 days, so I think it could be a discretionary thing from, say, 14 to 30 days. And that gives us the, you know, between two weeks and a month.
Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, it's too bad a garbage versus a pile of something.
It's, it's, I don't think the assessment should be based on how much effort we think it's gonna take to clean it up. So I'm thinking to give everybody 30 days. And here's my rationale, is that if everybody, one is it removes subjectivity. And two, if it's smaller and it's just two bags, 30 days of two bags is not that big a deal. Just like two bags is not that big a deal. But, but if it's, if it's big and it's gonna take longer, then they get the 30 days. And that way we don't have to be subjective, everybody gets treated the same.
And that's true, Bob, that's a great point. And I mean, honestly, we're probably not going in for somebody who has two bags of trash, we're going in for somebody who has 20 bags of trash.
Well, I meant four bags versus.
Right, no, I know, I know what you're saying, I mean, but I, you know, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm taking my own point and tearing myself apart here because we're, we're not going in for, we're not going in for a minimal amount, you know, three, four bags of trash. We're, we're going into somebody who has.
A gross situation.
30, 20, you know, whatever bags of trash that have been there for a while. So, so 30 days, I'm, I'm comfortable with 30 days if everyone else is. I'm comfortable with 30 days.
I am, so how would you want them to contact Tara or just through an email, so email or phone?
Yeah, I can also put a spot online, which I'm working on the website right now, anyway, but there's a spot, you can report a road issue, so maybe if we have.
Oh, I think a spot, that would be awesome. I just don't want you guys to get bombarded with phones when you're talking, phone calls when you're trying to work.
Personally, I think, I'd like either email or in a voicemail.
Documentation.
Documentation, yeah.
So no anonymous complaints?
Yeah, I mean, they can be kept anonymous, but we need to have documentation of, that way we know the date and the time the complaint was made and.
I'm sorry, Bob, what did you say?
You know, I, I think I'm agreeing with, with Jamie, it's a, we, we shouldn't allow anonymous complaints coming into the town.
Right.
Also shouldn't broadcast who complained, but we need to have that, that trail.
Right. So yeah, if you could put that on the website and then have a voicemail for that.
And I do have current complaints that I've gotten already, so I will start looking at how to adjust those.
Yeah, and Hannah, you said that you had, you thought that you had a form that they could.
We can make one, maybe improve the zoning administration stuff, so I think we could pretty easily.
Okay. That would be awesome, so there's the first part, the second part would be for them to decide who should go out and look at it, correct?
Well, I think, I think another part that we have to do here.
And then education.
Right, the education is one thing. I think one thing that we need to do in town is, is we need to, and I don't know how to do this, we need to look into that. But when we, when we find somebody as the board of health or the select board or whatever, whether it's a zoning violation or a health violation or a trash violation, I think we have to do the judicial bureau ticket.
Oh, I agree.
Because, because that way we have some teeth in it and if they don't pay that ticket, it goes on their driver's license.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and I really think we need to look into how we do that and do that the proper way so that, I mean, let's face it, when a lot of times, there's not a lot of teeth in our tickets.
Right.
The decent person pays their ticket for whatever it is.
Right.
But the person who wasn't gonna pay it, they're not going to. But if there's, if there's a consequence against their driver's license for not paying their fine. Or, or something, some kind of consequence other than, oh, you know, you didn't pay your fine. Um, when you see them in stewards, you know, if there's a consequence, I think we need to look into that.
I agree, 100%.
I think it goes through a judicial bureau ticket type thing, right? But I want to have that, I want to have a concrete, I want to have a concrete, this is what we need to do.
Okay.
You know, I, I don't want to have a here, he said, she said, I want to have a concrete.
Yeah.
You know, we can do that at the next board meeting on that.
Okay.
And I think, I think we're on a good, I think we're on the right track with this one. Is everybody comfortable with that and we can finalize this next board meeting?
Absolutely.
Definitely.
And what do you think of the flyer, should we mean anything, add anything?
This is just for the ordinance.
Right.
Yeah.
And I can.
No, I thought the ordinance was good.
Can run it, show Rebecca and well, she's seen it.
I, I would suggest one change. If this is gonna be for the ordinance, maybe if you're gonna create the online form on the website.
Yeah.
Like have that listed on here as well.
Definitely, email or the.
Yeah.
You know, maybe, maybe we should wait to print this until after we find out about the judicial bureau ticket.
Right.
So that we can add that to the flyer that, that, you know, if you're fined, that's right, if you're fined and you don't pay your fine, these, this is, these, these potentially are the consequences.
Yeah, that way it's all upfront.
I, I don't want to be changing anything, I just think maybe adding those two things would be, you know, awesome.
Plenty of space right there.
Right, well, yeah, you could do whatever. I'm sure Hannah, after creating this, I'm sure she could figure out a nice little spot to put both those in there.
For putting, however, we're gonna have it on the website, whether it be a form or a separate section, having that information listed on the flyer.
Reporting.
Yeah.
How to make a complaint and all that.
And then we need to decide how we're gonna get the flyer out there, are we gonna do a mass mailing of this flyer? Or are we just going to?
I think a one-time mass mailer and then also having it posted and available on the website, I think is more than adequate. And in the town report as well.
So that's $760 for postage and $150 for printing?
No, that was.
That was for, yeah, that was for something to do with Rebecca's.
Oh, so could you bring back for next meeting how much it would cost for printing, please? Thank you, Hannah.
Is everybody good with the ordinance, have we, we got a good direction to go with that?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Can I just ask one question, although I'm not from town, but.
Yeah, could you just announce your name, please?
Bruce Boza, from Ritzboro, running for the state representative. Who do you appeal the ticket to?
It'd be the select board.
It's like for issuing the ticket, right, is your appeal process to go above.
Probably a great question.
Yeah.
That's a great question.
It is a very good question.
I think, well, like once it's in the judicial bureau's hands, it would go to, I believe, civil court. Is where it would go if they wanted to contest it, I think, but that should be part of my research and figuring out how to follow through. Yeah, I believe that that is the process, that it would go through the regular civil court process, but I'm not positive.
That's something that we need to make sure of, that's a great, that's a great.
So for issuing tickets, we're gonna have to, the documentation, photos, statement from an officer or something.
Right.
Thank you for that question.
Any more discussion on the trash ordinance, solid waste ordinance for, the re-adoption?
No, I think they did an outstanding job.
Yeah, the flyer, great. Um, so we'll bring that back on the next regular meeting, which is November 10th.
I think so, yes.
Um, and I won't be here, but you guys can certainly take care of that without any problem. Um, mobile home information pamphlet, can you share that as well, Hannah?
I think Rebecca's gonna speak about that.
So, um, this is based on the, the last meeting, we had a conversation. Um, I, I did a bunch of research and talked to a bunch of different agencies to find out what our, you know, what, what relationship do municipalities have with mobile home parks? And making sure we have the right information about who really gets contacted for what kind of issues. So I condensed it all and I put it into this brochure. And I also ran it by Arthur Hamlin of the ACCD, the mobile home division, and he thought it was great, so he approved. Um, and the only idea that I had added to it was potentially creating, because you know, you can hand someone a flyer and who knows if they'll keep it, I have a thousand pieces of paper and who knows where they are, right? We were thinking about creating a refrigerator magnet that just had the important contact numbers on it and maybe the link to be able to check your water testing. Um, something small, I mean, you know, not the size of a flyer. Um, and so Hannah suggested, or and Tara suggested, you know, printing it out on magnet paper ourselves, cutting it out and then attaching it into the brochure. Now, this is not a brochure that needs to go to the entire town, like I think this is a targeted thing. I would say we put a small stack of them at the stores, especially Winchester's. And if, if he's willing to have some, and, and you, you guys had talked about actually going down and handing them out or you could put them, you know, I'll let you guys figure that out about which parks, if all of the parks, just a few, the ones that we are interacting with the most. It's up to you guys, but that's, so this is what I created, if you want to go to the second page so people can see it. So we have, we have town contacts in case they need. And then I tried to organize it by kinds of information, right? So there's a problem with my water, who do I call? And so we have the agency of natural resources, drinking and groundwater. Um, and then the website of where they can check their, their wells, most recent test. And then what do we do when there's a health violation? So things such as trash, suspected faulty electrical systems. We have the health officer's email on there and Rutland Fire and Safety. Because one thing we did learn is that rental inspections are moving to fire and safety, that is moving out of town per view. And then the most important one, I think, on here is the CVOEO mobile home program. That is the place where anyone can call that lives in a park and has an issue or concern. And they are the people that would refer that person to Arthur Hamlin or they would refer them to another agency. So I think like if we're, especially if we're doing tiny little fridge magnets, if we had to pick one number, that's the number that goes on it. Although we should do larger fridge magnets and that, but I'm saying that that's the most important one on this whole brochure. And that's it.
I think it's a really nice brochure, I really like it. I only had a suggestion of maybe adding animal control information on it and information on the roads, which is the owners of the park or go to the zoning administrator. Because they, they do talk about animal problems and the roads in the parks that the town is not responsible. That would be my only suggestion.
Okay, um, I can.
I mean, I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
No, I, I, I think that's a great idea, I think having the, having the roads on there, I think having the animal control information.
Well, I think that for like where it says there, where it says the health on this, I'm sorry, I asked you the first page, now I need to go to the second one again, I'm sorry Hannah. Where it says, uh, where it says, there is a health, I could say a health or animal control violation. And then I could just add the health officer, right?
Right.
And then, then the one about, um, I mean, I could just.
Well, you have the health officer there already.
So you just have to add the animal control.
I meant animal control officer, that's what I meant. And then what I could do is I could make that graphic a little smaller where it says one-on-one support and I need general information. Um, I could say, who do they call about the roads? Their park owner.
Yes, park owner and then zoning administration.
Zoning administrator, I'm responsible or the, you know, to me right now, the zoning administrator is responsible for, to make the park owners keep the roads up.
Got it, okay, so then what I would do is I can put it where it says I need general information, including relevant states. I can kind of like just make that smaller and I can put the zoning piece there with the roads. Sound good?
Yeah, other than that, I think it's great.
Yeah.
All right, well, I just, I don't want to have to have you approve it again, so as long as you approve it with the changes that you just said. And then, and then, and then I really think that having a fridge magnet, so that way people can put it on, I mean, maybe not everyone will keep it, but it's, people are a lot more likely to keep that on their fridge than a flyer in a junk drawer, you know?
And that's what will cost $150 is the magnet paper.
Oh, okay.
And the printing, the printing 200 of them wouldn't bring the cost of our regular monthly service up.
We already pay a monthly service, so it would just be the extra 150 for the paper. For 200 magnets.
And what is the magnet size that we would be printing?
So I base it on, I base it off, because if you do a two-by-three magnet, you'd say 12 of them on 8.5 by 11 pieces of paper. But if you do like a four-by-four, you can literally say six, so it depends on what size you guys want.
Two-by-three.
Four-by-four is pretty big.
Like that, right?
So do you think two-by-three would be big enough?
Yeah.
That's gonna be some small print.
Well, two-by-three.
Maybe you're right, yeah, maybe four-by-four.
So bad.
Or three-by-four, whatever you said.
We need a visual. Either like that.
Select it, print it, print your properties and shrink it down, print one out and see what it looks like.
Even if you do a four-by-four, though, there's still enough sheets in the cheapest pack that I found for, to do it for $115, so.
I, I think the four-by-fours would be, in my personal opinion, I think the four-by-fours. I I think the four by fours would be, in my personal opinion, I think the four by fours would be um than the two by three.
Yeah.
I think it's less apt to find the garbage. You know?
Yes, agree.
I I might be more apt to go on the refrigerator or wherever.
Yep.
And I and I think the I think the refrigerator magnets, um I think that's a great idea. I know, I know there's a little bit of an expense to it, but we're also trying to make this. We're we're trying to make this work.
Right.
For everyone.
Easier process.
So I think for, I think spending a couple hundred bucks.
Oh, I agree.
To make, to try to make something work is money well spent. If it's a couple thousand, it'd be different, but a couple hundred bucks is not. My opinion.
I agree.
So. I'll entertain a motion. To move forward with the Mobile Home Park Informative Pamphlet with the suggested changes and.
The magnets?
And the and the refrigerator magnets, four by four. Do we have a number of that we're going to start with, number of pamphlets or magnets?
I will get back to you on that after, when I, I think I'll probably do all the parks, so we don't leave anyone out. And then I can just touch base with Julie on who's, how many residences are in each park and do some quick math. But I don't think it's enough to bring uh the total printing amount up.
So our printing's not gonna change, it's it's gonna be locked into whatever, okay, okay. So I guess we don't need a number. So I'll just entertain the motion for the Mobile Home Park Information Pamphlet. And um the printing of a four-by-four refrigerator magnet on on magnet paper.
Let me.
Sure.
Mr. Treasure, can you, where are we, um, bunch of fun? Have you guys figured that out?
I haven't looked.
From this post it's coming from. It's not a lot, but we need to know, is it this, because of new new policies, new everything. Is it gonna, is it a selective expense? It's not really an office supply expense. So I'm asking because these girls are gonna come to me and say.
Where?
What should we charge this to? I don't know. Cause we're changing, so as we're changing, we need to figure out where to take it from.
We should have money in that train, right?
Newsletter? There was a newsletter.
We uh, that was last year's plan, I think.
I can't remember.
If it was, that's a great place.
Okay.
Okay, otherwise, do you guys have an issue with us deciding where to take that from? An expense on that, we're almost halfway through the year, so we kind of know where we're going.
We should have money in training still, right, for the select board?
You have selectman expenses and you don't usually ramp up too too many, cause there hasn't been a lot of educational things out there to do that.
Right. That's why I say.
Well, I would think if we if we have the newsletter, that's the perfect place, and if we don't.
If we do, that would be awesome.
Right, and then we, if not, we can take it out of the select board expenses for what it's for what it's gonna be. It's not a tremendous amount of money.
Right, I agree with that.
I make them, I can do. Accept Rebecca's pamphlet for the mobile home. And with our changes and to include the four-by-four informational magnets.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Questions? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Executive.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session for personnel.
So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I don't know if there'll be um action taken after.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, third, um.
Twelve.
Twelve, um town office appearance policy review.
So what that is, is just basically a policy for the administrative offices here in the town office, because it's a brand-new building. Uh, we feel like there should be some guideline on what we're able to put on the walls, how we put things on the wall. Um, you know, how we treat the space. Do we have lots of plants? Do we have lots of wall hangings? Do we have?
Professional.
Knickknacks or, you know, that sort of stuff. So this policy that I sent you all sort of addresses all those pieces. And I'm just looking for feedback as um as to whether you think anything should be added or changed, and I will. Run it through V L C T and the lawyer before we, before I get final approval for from you guys.
I didn't see anything in there crazy. From from my point of view, I thought everything was pretty reasonable. It gives it gives people a chance to have a little bit of a personal. Touch to their to their workspace and their or their office, but it still kept things fairly.
Professional.
Professional and town town-oriented.
I kept saying manager, though, who would be the manager? Do you want to change that? Do you want to change it to?
Yeah, I guess I could probably change that.
Thank you. That was the only thing I saw, otherwise I thought it was really good.
I I I guess, so so just to touch on that really quick, I think that's probably. Who do we want to leave that up to? Would we leave it up to our executive assistant? Because that's who is kind of. Running the.
I would.
Town office?
I would say that.
I would say.
And if if there's a if there's a problem, um we we have the parameters and we probably should put this in the policy. And I don't remember, I didn't I didn't see this. If somebody wanted to appeal something, then they could come to the select board if the executive assistant.
Right.
Felt unduly.
Felt felt that somebody, you you were being unfair, because you know, I'm just pointing to you now, because it could, because it is. But if you were being unfair, then we certainly could um say. That then they could come to the select board for an appeal. Does that, does that make sense, Bob?
Uh, it does. I I would also add that uh, you know, also feel free to come to the select. If in practice, we find things just aren't practical, we can always adjust the policy.
Right, right, exactly.
Yep.
Okay? Good. Everybody good with that?
Yep, yes.
And then we'll, she does that and we'll bring it back and and adopt it. Uh, ARPA, I kind of put this, this was Tara and I kind of put this together, parameters and guidelines for applicants for for some ARPA money. I'd like to form, I'd like to form some sort of a, I guess, a committee, for lack of a better term. Right now, for people to come in, potential businesses or whatever, for the remaining ARPA funds. I don't know what your feelings are on this, and you can talk on this a little bit, because I know you have some stuff too, so. What one of the things that I thought we should have on here is. A financial person. Somebody somebody whose background is in is in financial, whether it's a bank or whatever. So that they they could ask, because I don't think we just want to go willy-nilly and give out money for for. You know, somebody coming in, let's say we're doing it for businesses. Uh, you know, and I we don't, you know, I know some of the stuff to ask, but not all of it, you know, do we? We'd like to see a business plan, we'd like to see.
Yeah.
You know, uh, just different things, and and I think some, having someone in the financial. With a financial background certainly could help us, and maybe I'm wrong, but I think that they could certainly help in that situation.
My other question is, are we setting this up as a low-interest loan? Because is this gonna set the town up for future requests? That we do have to budget for? I I that's that's. I understand, but once, once the government likes to start something, then people expect it to be available down the road. And then it falls on the town's thing.
We could probably design that legally and say, hey, once the money's gone, it's gone.
How much ARPA money is left? Three hundred and forty-eight thousand? That's not very much.
That's after all the earmarks that's already been taken out.
Been around there, yeah, it's like. But also, guidelines as far as, you know, are you going to make funds available to private businesses?
Right.
Are you going to make funds available only to nonprofit? Or, you know, we have a request from the, I believe it's a rescue squad. For funds to purchase a generator, um just so that we have more of an idea of. What types of requests we're even gonna accept, you know what I mean, like? Let's put some sort of limit.
I think my my opinion, go ahead, Bob.
No, no, I was just gonna say Rebecca has her hand up. She she knows a lot of the ARPA stuff, maybe we oughta.
Um, I was just gonna say, if you guys wanted to add it into your um. Like cash of things you can do with it, if if you wanted to do something with private businesses, et cetera, I mean, you could start a revolving loan. Which would then alleviate a bit of what you're talking about, Harry, this thing of just just giving it. To people and then having expectation, but if they're really low interest. You know, um, a revolving loan fund, it also could be something that could be tapped into ongoing. By local businesses to help with economic seed money, to help economic development, things like that. I'm just putting it out there. As opposed to a gift, there's, that is one option of what you could do with all of that. The other thing I wanted to say, and then I'm gonna mute myself, is that. When you do get to a committee or whatever, I would like, I would like to have some, I'd like to be involved. Just because of I, all of the thinking I've done about this since it all started, so.
Right. Well, I didn't know if we legally could do that with that pot of money or not.
Well, I think that.
You can do whatever you want with it. It's for the town to do what they decide, whatever you, the board decides to do with it.
I I, you know, to me, to me, one of the most important things to do with at least a significant portion of it. Is to try to build some sort of, I don't I don't wanna say infrastructure, but some sort of a. Business-based, small business-based. Situation, or you know. You know, where where it's gonna benefit the whole entire town, tax base, it's gonna benefit, you know, I also don't want to limit. Limit it just to that, because we have the nonprofits, the fire departments, rescue squads, whatever, blah blah, which is totally fine too, but but I think, you know. Moving forward, this is an opportunity to, in my opinion, to take that money. And and build for the future of the town.
Right.
Uh, you know, business-wise and and tax-based and that kind of stuff.
No, I I understand that, and I I was happy, because we initially looked at. Oh, we could save the taxpayers' money as far as. You know, said with the sewer situation and whatnot. I mean, so, I mean, I I'm glad we focused on that first, and this is obviously something we should look at.
I I'm uh, just to, I I'm gonna parrot a little bit of that. Um, Mike, I like the idea, and Jamie, I like the idea of of doing something to make the environment more favorable for businesses to start up. I personally, I don't like the idea of of making it available to businesses directly. Because then now we're in the business of propping up one business at the expense of possibly a competitor. So uh, and I don't want to be in that position, and I I don't think government should be in that position.
Right.
But it, but making, but doing things like Mike was talking about, I, but I can't put my finger on what it is. To make it more attractive for opening, make it more attractive for people opening businesses, or easier for anyone to open a business in public. That would be the way to, that would be the way to go, I think.
We may have residents right here that are, have been thinking about things and.
We can put it toward our costs, forcing the new solid waste ordinance.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think there's some, you know, I think it needs some discussion, that's why we brought it out there, I think it needs some research. I I also think we should try to, we should try to um, we should try to reach out to maybe some other towns that are similar to us. And and when I say similar to us, um, I think we should reach out to. Not necessarily Bennington or whatever, but I think we should reach out to towns that are, have a similar makeup, you know, Arlington maybe, or Shasberry, or. You know, different, different towns around the state that are, that have a similar makeup as us, instead of having that.
Larger.
Larger business.
Money and.
Population, you know, such as Bennington or or Manchester or whatever. You know, I think that that might be, you know, something that, you know, we could, we could research that out too. Just a thought. There's a lot of thoughts on this, and and I don't want to spend a lot more time on this.
Are we gonna set up a committee for this?
I I would love to set up a committee. I I I think we need to bring this, once again, I hate the table stuff. I think we need.
I would come back.
It's gotta come back. I I think, I think we should come up with some ideas and what we think the committee should consist of. You know, should the, should the committee consist of um, you know, uh, somebody from Parks and Rec and somebody from, you know what I mean? Or or.
Representatives from each board.
Or or should it just be two select board members? And I I I personally think a financial person, that that's what they do.
That's where I zone with this.
Definitely, you know, a a person that we we should bring into this. Because because, let's face it, I mean, I'm not, I'm not a financial person. Um, you know, I I ran my business successfully for a long time, but. There's a lot of questions that need to be asked here that I don't want to know.
Well, I know personally, I'd like to see improvements along the Hoosier River corridor for public access to the waterway. Because I think that would be a great opportunity to open it up for potential businesses.
I I.
But that's my opinion.
No, I just think, you know, we need to, we need to figure out what we as a board think should the committee should consist of.
I think you're in the right direction as far as a financial person, because that way, that helps us set up a guideline for the format for applying.
Right.
And then have the committee oh look it over as far as.
Right.
You know, non-biased.
I mean, maybe, you know, do we, do we, there's a lot of things, do we, do we give business owners? We don't give them money to start the business, we give them money for improvement to their facility, or I, you know, I don't know. I don't know, there's a, there's a million things out there. Well, you know, it's it's unlimited, it's it's. It's open to someone's imagination, right? It it's plain and simple, so. I'd like to, I. Because I won't be here at the next meeting, I'd like to push it off to the second meeting in November, if everybody's comfortable with that.
For twenty-fourth.
Uh, yeah, I think it is the twenty-fourth, which is Thanksgiving, but it would be whatever, it won't be that.
Yeah, how, oh, how do we handle Thanksgiving meeting? It literally falls on Thanksgiving.
That's why.
Be as soon from our homes as we eat turkey.
No, I'll be sleeping.
To the next week, the first week in December?
I think that's what we did before.
I think that's what we.
Yeah, that's what we did.
And then you would have two back-to-back?
Yeah.
We did like the first week.
Push it off to that, the following week after Thanksgiving, and then. And then I'd like to put this ARPA thing on there, gives us plenty of time to think it through. I, and if you guys want to do it on November tenth or whatever, I I'm fine with that, I just would like to be part of it and I won't be here.
Do you want to put it out for letters of interest to see if anybody would be interested in joining something? Like, what kind of public interest do we have?
Well, personally, I think we oughta, we we oughta decide what the direction is before we start.
Exactly.
That's what I think.
Cause then you need the committee to know the direction.
And then we can put the letters out, you know, I think we're putting the cart before the horse with that. I think let's, let's figure out what direction we want to go in. And then, because ultimately, we're responsible for the, for the money, so.
But I also don't want to uh, uh, Brian, just I think two of the things you said, I thought were. We're pretty good, it's uh, the uh, something along the Hoosier. And I forgot what that second thing, but it sounded pretty good, too.
He just figured with access around the Hoosier, could possibly bring in other businesses that may have that.
I I thought I had them both at the top of my head when I started speaking, but now I've lost the second.
No, all I said was about doing improvements along the Hoosier River corridor to improve access.
Right.
Opportunities for businesses, you know. If we may, if we, my opinion, if we can open up the river access. Make it more accessible, then potentially a business may wanna set up shop nearby to, I don't know. Fly fishing, tubing, canoe, and all that kind of stuff.
I mean, the only other thing that I was, I I kind of. Had in the back of my head, I ran initially, was access to the property, the town property somehow.
Cause I mean, eventually, we're gonna have the bridge crossing over to the Strovich property.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we're gonna need a D that access. So, once we start our logging plan and all that, then we're gonna have the trail set up and. It's gonna open us up to more of that property.
So let's bring us back that first meeting in December, and we'll come up with some parameters and and go from there. Perfect. Which brings us to executive for contractual. Sorry, Bruce.
Sorry, Butler.
I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive for contractual.
So moved.
And I don't.
Oops, sorry.
I don't know if there's going to be action taken after or not. There may be. I'm not, I don't know.
Okay, so moved.
Seconded.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian? Any motion to come out of executive session, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion.
Because I'll make a motion that we, uh, uh, appoint Rebecca Dragon as the project manager for administering the VORAC grant. To be paid out of, or to be reimbursed by VORAC funds.
Seconded.
Any discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Any public comment, Hannah? No public comment? Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.